Greetings all, welcome this evening to our Washington Township Zoning Board of Review for the February meeting. As usual, we will begin the board meeting with our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every team justice for all.
Thank you everyone, always, and for everyone's service who's involved. And we've got a few of them up here at this dais. We've got roll call coming here, D3.
It's actually our secretary.
Our secretary's gonna do the roll?
Mylum.
All right, very good.
Mr. Coulson, he always remembered me, but apparently Mr. Sacco doesn't remember me.
Come on now.
Okay. All right, here we go. Chairperson Sacco.
Hello.
Vice Chair Coulson.
Here.
Mylum here. Holak.
Here.
Poled.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Michelle. We've got number three on the agenda, and I have to ask you, D3.
Yes.
This is something recently I just noticed, it may have been on there at a couple meetings. Address any conflicts of interest. What might that pertain to? I have an idea, but I don't know if the world knows what this means.
Well, so, under the rules of procedure that was adopted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, that is, the order of the agenda.
Yes.
And it's an opportunity to address any conflicts with regards to, you know, the applicants or anything up for discussion during the meeting.
Okay, maybe if there's any conflict between an applicant and a zoning board member as well, correct?
Correct.
Which could happen, not that I've ever seen it happen, but those are, that's kind of like what this is all about. All right, very good.
With this one, with this one good example, I live in Glacier Club, and occasionally there are members of possibly my own sub that might be coming before the zoning board.
Okay.
So I would just state that I have no personal interest or conflict with the applicant.
So you weren't involved in the speed bump?
No.
Okay, thank you for that, Michael. Okay, any other comment on the, address any conflicts of interest?
So, Bob, since you brought it up, Dana sent out the bylaws this morning for Planning Commission, which has really good criteria. I know you're not in the Planning Commission, but the Planning Commission bylaws define conflict of interest minimally as something that is a case concerning you, something that's a case concerning work on land owned by you or adjacent to land owned by you, something that involves a corporation, company partnership, or other entity in which you're a part owner or have a financial interest, yes.
Yes.
A case in which action results in some other benefit to you, or to your spouse, children, stepchildren, grandchildren, parents, the list goes on. So, those are some of those examples.
Okay, those things can happen. The only time I've ever seen a member, and it wasn't on the zoning board, it was on the Planning Commission, because of their land, where it was located, and it was very, you know, considerably important location and value, that commissioner would recuse themselves, because they didn't want to show even an appearance of a conflict. And many times, the appearance is just as bad as the factual conflict of interest. So, I guess it's important, you never know when it can happen, but that's the only instance I've known in all my years, dealing with the township and doing these, doing these roles, so it's good to know. All right, we've beat that to death. Can we get a motion for approving our agenda?
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Approval of minutes from the last time.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll support it.
Very good, Troy.
Who supported?
Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Looks like we're ready to move right into old business. Hopefully it's not too old. Dealing with 61400 Van Dyke, it is involved with Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Article 5, Site Standards, Section 5.8, Pathway, Sidewalks and Walkways. Applicability, required roads, pathway or sidewalk shall be constructed in the following instances, for all new construction of non-residential buildings which constitute the principal use of property and for development, in which a site plan must be submitted for review by the Planning Commission. This is parcel specifically number 2404224008. It is located on the east side of Van Dyke, north of 28 Mile Road. Many of us out there in the audience would know this as the Old Golf Driving Range. So, I presume somebody is here to talk to us about it. Name and address?
Good evening. James Sarkony, address, I'm a resident of Washington Township, 7191 Frampton West, and I also am an attorney representing the applicant here, VND, and that's Caribou Riley Rancilio, 12900 Hall Road, Suite 350 Sterling Heights, 48313. We previously submitted our application for this variance, we're seeking to receive a variance to alter the requirement with respect to the pavement, the sidewalk, that eight-foot-wide sidewalk that the ordinance says is to be provided in front of our improvements that we have scheduled. Before I get into the various points of variance request, I wanted to point out that under the ordinance, if we go to subsection B1A, something I just noticed this afternoon, it occurs to me when you look at required roads, and that's what we're saying, that the property abuts a required road, says an eight-foot-wide concrete pathway shall be required across the frontage of all properties abutting designated required roads. Understand that. The next thing it says is pathway shall be constructed on one or both sides of the proposed road right-of-way. And in that instance, we already have a eight-foot-wide, I think it's eight-foot at least, wide pathway on the opposite side of that required road, that being the McComb Orchard Trail is on the west side of Van Dyke at that place. So to the variance request at issue this evening, you guys have the, all have the packet, you'll note that DPW Director appears to, from my reading of his, of his comments, is in favor of the variance based upon, I think, a prior variance being granted and the fact that there isn't any abutting property usages that have sidewalks. I will note that when you're heading north, there's, on either side, with the exception of the McComb Orchard Trail, you have one property owner that has any sidewalk before we get at least another mile down, that's the Marino property, but then south of that, from 28, you don't see another sidewalk until almost we get to here, to the Township Hall, that's when it forks with campground, that there's, I think, any sidewalks on the eastern side. And then, of course, the road wants to take a jog to get to the M53 interchange, and I don't believe there'd ever be any sidewalk heading to the interchange or coming from the interchange. So it's not likely that there would ever be sidewalks at that, we'll call it the southern end of Van Dyke, as we, as we approach the campground Van Dyke corridor. So now, to the elements that we have to prove here, we do have a unique parcel, we brought it up on variants, various other variance requests we've brought before the ZBA and the council. This property is bordered on three different sides with wetlands. We didn't create that characteristic. The wetlands have something that's affected our, obviously, the building envelope, and it also creates a challenge for how you're going to put in the sidewalk if we had to do that. We also have an easement in place with, I don't recall if it's DTE or ITC.
ITC.
ITC corridor, so we have to deal with jogging around that, but most importantly, with the, with the culvert and the, and the wetlands, you're looking at having to put, like, a pedestrian bridge as opposed to a, to a pathway to make that, to make that happen. The expenses are, I think, disproportionate to the benefits that we would receive when we're talking about the fact that there aren't any other foreseeable uses that would, I think, bring pedestrians to that side of the road for probably a two-mile stretch. It's going to invade the proposed sanitary and water main, I think that's been brought up by Spalding, that the fact that we're going to be bringing the water in the sanitary there, so that that's gonna have to be.
DPW Director Rich Amorino brought that to light.
Okay, so that's there. I think everything else, you know, candidly, I'd rather see if we have questions or feedback, is pretty well laid out in Pete Snyder's letter that he submitted in support of this. And if you looked at the maps we provided, I think that supports my statements about the lack of, I think, sidewalks in the area, and I think the foreseeable future that there wouldn't be any. And so I think we qualify under the standards to get a variance in this particular instance, and most importantly, because of that, that wetland component on both the north and south ends of the, of the property. Any specific questions?
James, very good. You were more succinct than I thought you would be, so you did well. And colleagues, board members, any questions of, unless you have Pete lined up in the on-deck circle?
You always need to, you always need to be prepared with a backup.
Okay, very good.
You've seen those commercials when you have to go for the relief.
All right.
So this is the backup quarterback, and he's prepared to take it home.
Okay.
I have a couple questions.
Go ahead, Mike.
Did you ever consider what the cost would be to do the pathways?
So, I myself have not run a calculation, that would be something more of, that Urban Land would have done. I believe they've done other pedestrian bridges in Shelby Township and the like, and I would think Pete could speak to what that cost would be. This is not a insignificant amount of frontage that you would be talking about having to do that pedestrian bridge, but do you wanna chime in?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's a lot more than just a paved pathway, that's for sure. There, in fact, the township, I believe, is involved in putting a pathway right now across the Yates on the north side of 26, right there by the, so your township engineer has, I think, may have some current numbers on what they're installing. It would be the same thing, it's a, that is a frontage pathway that's crossing the Yates drain between East Village Estates and the commercial areas down towards Jewel Road on the north side.
Ball Park, what are we looking at at this, roughly estimate, we won't hold you?
Probably a couple hundred bucks a linear foot.
In total, it would be?
For, for the bridge, and again, I haven't done exactly, but we're talking a lot. And there really is a complicating factor, because those things are on piers, they're on, they're on foundations, which are going to have to be right in the sanitaries who are in water main easements where we're running a township utility. So we gotta coordinate that as well with, with that utility planning, so.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Pete Snyder is an engineer, civil engineer.
My name is Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan is my business address. I also am a township resident, 28 months.
I was gonna say, we haven't seen you in a while, Pete, you must be busy.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
Chair Sacco, if I could just, so I just pulled up an email, because this question came up from the ZBA and also from the Planning Commission with regards to what the cost. So Taylor Reynolds, who's also with Spalding D. Decker, had provided us with, she said, concrete pathway project cost per square foot forty dollars per square feet, which would be three hundred and twenty dollars per linear foot for an eight-foot-wide concrete pathway. Now, there's boardwalk, you know, there's boardwalk, obviously, if that plays a factor, a hundred and eighty a square foot, which is one thousand four hundred and forty dollars per linear foot for an eight-foot-wide boardwalk.
Okay. Doesn't sound like crumbs there.
No, so I'm only five times too little. I'm glad I didn't bid that much. I guess a couple hundred on linear foot, I'm, I'm out of date on that.
Thanks, Dana.
So, so that was one of my questions, and also, should, should we deny the request? What would the applicant do? I'm just asking that for right now. I'm not saying I'm going either way, but I just wanna.
It's a factor that we have to take into consideration in the overall development, but we'll be going before the trustees on as another variance, but in any event, those who are familiar with the project, there's environmental mitigation that needs to take place. So if we are, irregardless of what happens in terms of this variance or another variance, we have significant mitigation efforts and monitoring that we're gonna have to do for the property. So if it's a thousand dollars a linear feet, and we do the math, it may be that this is cost prohibitive, I don't know as of yet. So as we put together those budgets, along with that budget that's coming up based upon what we find out Wednesday, it could push this out of feasibility, and then, I mean, we have an out-of-business golf range, but we, you know, it also could just delay the timing of putting up the buildings that are called for. I think we have five years to put the first, construct the first building, we just might be taking all of that five years just because of the added costs that we have to try to recoup for the boardwalk.
I mean, I definitely feel it's a hardship, I mean, there's no doubt. And based upon Mr. Snyder's information, plus from what we've had in the past, we did give a variance to, like, the American, the.
Samaritan House.
Yes, Samaritan House.
DMB Auto.
And so, so there's two of them that were in the same, in the same area, and with, with ITC, and then the wetlands, it just, it's, it's just a total hardship for you. And I'm, I'm in favor of approving it with the variance.
Thank you. Any other questions, though, specifically as to?
Do you know how many, how much wetland you'd be covering? Have you had it surveyed by Eagle at all? Do you have any data on the amount of wetlands that you'd have to cross?
So is the question, how much of the wetlands gonna be impacted specifically by the sidewalk?
By the boardwalk, yes. And is it impacted by the project itself, too, in the back, that you're gonna be, with all the storage, areas that would not be able to be used because there's so much wetland over there?
Once again, I think I'm going to tap out, I was looking for the drawing, but urban land would be much more knowledgeable in the, in the total square footage of the wetlands.
Yeah, Dana's, yeah, Dana's got the drawing, and I think it was part of the package as well. So, to, to answer your question regarding the variant, the sidewalk portion, Eagle wouldn't consider the raised boardwalk an impact, that's the whole reason they'll require it, because if we put in a sidewalk at grade, meaning a concrete pathway, they would consider that, obviously, you're paving over wetlands. So, I'm, you know, let me, let me take a quick look at the plan, because I was gonna say.
About eighty feet, eighty, like, linear feet?
Yeah, it's about eighty linear feet of, of frontage that the pathway would need to traverse. And it's made a little more difficult, because it's actually ending in the wetlands, meaning we have a bridge that we got the rights to build to the property line, but then we have to talk to the neighbor to bring it back down again on the other side of the wetlands and see how far, how much further. Either that, or we're just, you know, putting, putting boards across the end of it and telling people they can't use it till the neighbor to the south connects. So.
I know.
Michelle, do you have any, or do you have something?
Yep, just.
After Troy.
Just a second. I know you talked about, we did, we approved the one further up north of Van Dyke. We also denied one back in, back in June, I think it was, June, for a new property that was being put up. And they, they talked about having to cover some significant wetlands as well, new construction housing on 31 Mile Road. So there's that one that was, also came up.
And I mean, when you look at, Marino's did it, Rexham Ruth's did it, and it's kind of known before this project even took off that you were gonna be expected to do this, so it's kinda hard to say that you relied on a variance to get this far down in the line of your business. You know, I'm sure that you have another plan, I'd love to hear it. I, I know you don't come here coming up with Plan B, but I would think that there's gotta be a Plan B.
Plan B is, we have to follow the ordinance, which means the pathway and the raised wooden boardwalk. It is interesting, at least one of those landscape places you mentioned, uses their pathway to store landscape materials.
And I've been made aware of that because of this, and I think that is something we need to look at, because clearly that doesn't go forward with what we're thinking, and sometimes it does take a little nudge in the right direction, and I think that that's one good thing that comes from this, sometimes we're asleep at our house. And I've been made aware of that because of this, and I think that is something we need to look at, because clearly that doesn't go forward with what we're thinking, and sometimes it does take a little nudge in the right direction, and I think that that's one good thing that comes from this. Sometimes we're asleep at our helm for certain things, so we do need to nudge that in the proper direction. But that's where I'm at with this.
Okay.
I think there is. I got a couple, a couple of things. Let's say you have to put this sidewalk in, and this, over the wetland issue, and Rich says, "We gotta put the water in." Those pillars and everything else gets taken up. Who pays for all that to put back in? They're sure they're not gonna be footing the bill. The township.
They would coordinate the construction of all of that together.
They'd have to coordinate that. Gordon and Rich, it looks like it's gonna go right through the easement where it's gonna be, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I know that they're engineering all of that right now.
Yeah.
So it would all be coordinated as far, and so wouldn't, they wouldn't, if they had to install the sidewalk, it would be in the right place, so it wouldn't be affected by any of the utilities.
See, my concern is, when I read this from Rich, what are you saying? It looks like it's gonna be impacting if they have, they're made to put in.
It did sound like that.
It does.
It does.
Yeah, and I said, "Now, if that happens, you tear it up, now who's gonna eat that?" Sure, they can't say, "Let's do that again."
Unless, unless we seek an alternate location for the pathway, like move it back on the property or put it somewhere else, it will be right over in the area of the sanitary water. He's accurate. Now, coordinating construction, yes. Finding the best place for it under the circumstances, yes, certainly. I'm not as worried about the water main, because that's not as deep, but if you had to do sanitary sewer maintenance, yeah, that pathway's coming out. Any pathway would come out in the region of a sanitary sewer. They're deep, so.
The other thing is, you brought up a good point. I saw that, too, in our, in our own section in our book here, Master Plan. It clearly states that the required roads, pathways shall be constructed on one or both sides. We already have a path on the other side of the road, the, what you call the McCollum Orchard Trail, yeah.
Was there a reason we couldn't consider that a path? And the only reason I say that, I did see that, but when you look at what the trustees and what the township board dictated as required roads, that was, the McCollum Orchard Trail was there already when they, when, when they sat down and said, "These are going to be the required roads that would have to have a sidewalk put in," so they...
There's also not direct access. You know, it's, there is that buffer where the right of way is, and there's landscaping and trees to where pedestrians can't easily, you know, access or cross, you know, Van Dyke. It's the linear, linear park, but there's not a lot of, you know, ways for, for people to kind of get across the road or access it. It's independent of, you know, of what we're, of what this ordinance states.
I think Benny has a good question, because if I'm a pedestrian resident in Washington Township, and I want to traverse the 28 to 29 mile road on the required Van Dyke road, I'm looking at the Orchard Trail.
For safety reasons.
I don't care about the other side.
I would think the same thing, safety reasons, Orchard Trail. I don't know how much foot traffic you're gonna have for boat and car storage, or whatever you're gonna have.
Yes, it would be boats, car storage.
Yeah, so how much foot traffic are you gonna have versus bicycles and strollers and people walking down the Orchard Trail, versus people saying, "Gosh, I wish there was a sidewalk on the other side of Van Dyke so I could push my stroller or ride my bike." I don't think there's gonna be a lot of people asking for that. I kind of think the Orchard Trail's established, people are there, it's safe, it's out of the way. A lot of people don't even know it's there. I mean, they drive on Van Dyke. It's a nice path right there.
Now, it crosses, the Orchard Trail crosses that, I think it's 29, so it goes from the west side, and then it comes over to our east side, I think, just at Vorellans. I think that's where, is that where the old Walgreens is?
You can get across the 28 mile road with a...
28, 29 mile, it goes straight through.
So less than 150 yards from our property line, you can cross and get onto the...
The only thing, those are my concerns. I think that Rich brought up a good point. It's in our ordinance already saying that you already have one already established, and having a sidewalk on Van Dyke, I don't know if that's gonna increase the foot traffic for your business.
Trustee Milam, I think the...
I think they're right. I think you're winning me over, because, well, when you think about it, I can't think of another business that says, "Oh, jeez, if they would just put this sidewalk in, we could get some more foot traffic." Am I missing anything?
No, you're right.
I'm not thinking there's anything that would say, you know, "This is impeding my business from going forward." You know, Marino Landscape put the sidewalk in, however, good, but it's not going to anything, right? So...
Now, I think, and you bring up fantastic points, but to that point, Marino Landscaping, to the extent they've got some displays out there, maybe that's not what they're supposed to be doing, their customers are wanting to walk along that sidewalk in front of their property to look at samples. The distinction, I think, though, for us with respect to why those, that property put it in and why we shouldn't have, is they didn't have the issue with the wetland and having to put those piers and the possibility of these, that covered path, I'm sorry, the pedestrian, pedestrian bridge having to be taken out or maintained in some, some...
I believe Universal put that pathway in.
Yeah, United.
Before San, United.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, Dean. And before that, it was Randazzo Heating and Cooling. It was an empty lot with all their trucks, so they didn't need a pathway there, and that's not an eight-foot concrete. I think it's asphalt, but if I'm United or I'm Marino, I want to have a manicured curb appeal in front of my, where, block wears that we apply in selling landscapes, so it behooves them to have that. I don't think they were concerned about putting any pathway in other than the curb appeal, and it looks great. It's manicured, it sells their products. But that is the only area from 28 to 29 that there is a, what you call a pathway. To put anything else in would be a bridge to and from nowhere, if you do it after that spot or before that spot. So this is something that has always been a concern for me. This is the third time on the required road of Van Dyke that we have a variance request for sidewalk, and so something's going on there. And we have elements that our own DPW director brought to light, and I'm glad he did. Whether he did or not, for me, that is almost a linchpin of how I would like to deal with this, because from Roxham Roots all the way up to Apple Orchard End, the terrain does not complement a sidewalk going in. I don't know if you'll ever in our, any lifetime in this room, see a sidewalk from Roxham Roots all the way up to 29, and that's at least half, maybe a half a mile worth of ground. So that is something that I've always been concerned with, ever since we've had these issues. It's the ITC corridor. I don't want to admonish our sidewalk ordinance. It was made at a time when there was a lot of discussion and debate about where there should be connecting sidewalks. But I would like to remind everybody here, before we go to public hearing, which I'm saying too much already, that the majority of our population in this township lives in this village. We have sidewalk abound on both sides from 26 Mile Road on Van Dyke to campground. Anything outside of this area falls into a special kind of review, whether it's the beauty roads on campground, on Mount Vernon, half the people wanted dirt, half the people wanted it paved. I mean, the staff went through some hoops to write ordinance for sidewalk. I don't believe it considered something like the ITC corridor. It missed it. That's one of the blind spots, I feel, exists in our sidewalk ordinance. I'm gonna give the zoning board credit. Couple of years ago, when we launched this controversy, and I don't even remember the case, but I'm, I'm looking, we're having a zoning board of appeal hearing, and I'm looking at the sidewalk ordinance, and I'm saying to myself, "When was this written? And who's been following all the stuff that, you know, a paragraph like this of a sidewalk ordinance?" And that's when it kicked off to review that sidewalk ordinance, and a lot of things were going on with the campground, Mount Vernon, on and on and on. But one thing I have felt from the start is that many people read the ordinance about sidewalks, as shall and required, and, you know, we're still a transitioning community from rural agriculture to possibly suburban rural, and, you know, that ICTC corridor, there's a lot going on there with high wires and power wires and that strip of land, where there's just businesses that were created long ago, probably don't even meet the right-of-way setback, and the terrain doesn't complement anything like what we need, but I, I fear that people, they see the ordinance for sidewalks, and they think it's like building a cart path on a golf course that connects all the holes. It's easier said than done, and where the rubber meets the road is what people like Rich Amormino aren't talking about. We're talking about the township planning our infrastructure going up that side of Van Dyke, and why would we want to impose anything of cost that might be probably ripped out and then be replaced and be a, really a waste of time and money? I just, I question that. So you got my opinion about the whole, the whole process, but, though the sidewalk issue is something we have to live with, but there are places in our community where the ordinance does not cover it effectively or practicably. That's my worry, and that's why we're here.
And then just, and just one of your points, too, like the sidewalk ordinance, it goes back to connecting the residential areas to, like, strip miles that they can walk down, and there's no connection on the north or south end of Van Dyke. That's gonna connect to those buildings or those businesses, so I...
Yeah, good point.
Exactly.
Good point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well said.
Yeah, you get to 29 mile, and you go up to 30, you've got the commercial area with a lot of businesses and lots of sidewalk, and that's where it fits. In fact, we put a whole lot of new sidewalk, I say "we," the township, on the west side going 29 to 30 mile road, cross from Kroger, cross from Hyderbright, brand-new sidewalk, where it fits. There's, people live in behind there on both sides, and they can traverse and walk, just like in the village. Sidewalks are for going to church, for going to store, for doing those kinds of things, living life.
I need you, Chairman Sackel. Okay, now, if I, if we were willing to vote, and let's say we'll honor the fact that that would be cost prohibitive, and we'd probably be doing our residents a disservice by trying to get them to walk in that area anyways.
Right.
That's what I feel. However, I do believe we should be asking for some form of easement for the township to have.
Rich, he imposes easement. Michelle, I don't think we can require the easement.
As a condition, yes.
As a condition.
That's what I'd like to see, and then you have my vote, if we could do it that way, if we could do the easement.
Michelle, if we have the authority to do that as a condition, I'm happy. I'm more than happy.
D3, P2. What have you pitched me?
I would just suggest, if you add that as a condition, that you put in the, sorry, language that it be an easement both for, you know, future municipal infrastructure and future pathway, if the municipality decides to.
No problem with that.
Is that something you guys would be willing to see?
Talking with people, we fully intend or fully expect that we're gonna have to give all of that as an easement for utilities anyway, so.
I've heard the easement concept before Rich imposed it into his comments, which are very useful. We don't have to go to the Little Sisters of the Poor or common sense for DMB to make...
Are you teasing at me?
Oh, no, Michelle. I mean, for the Samaritan House, it was the Little Sisters of the Poor that got our decision.
Of course.
Well, then, I think it was already built, it was already stuff built up at the time.
At least, if that's amicable and we can get the language done.
Right. Good. Okay, let's have a public hearing and then move on. I have a motion for a public hearing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, public hearing.
Support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now going to conduct a public hearing in this matter. Notice is hereby given that the Washington Township Zoning Board of Appeals will hold public hearing on Monday, not Monday, June 3rd, but February 3rd, 2025, but this may have been an old...
That was the original, yes.
The old, the original was June 3rd, 2024. The boardroom, municipal building, Washington Township. It involves Vince Sorrello, S&amp;V Properties, 61-800-VANDYKE-Washington Township, Michigan 48094. Anyone here in the audience, from the public, who would like to comment about this application, please step forward. Seeing no one stepping forward, D3, do we have anything in writing, memorandum, email? You might want to respond to this?
I've received nothing.
You received nothing, okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Zoning board members, if you've got anything else to add, have at it. Michelle was really wrapping it up pretty well there before we had the public hearing.
This question's probably more, more for Planning Commission, but with the methane gas, I guess that issue has been resolved.
So the issue of methane gas is gonna come up, I think, two more times. One, it'll come up in the context of, and it doesn't impact the sidewalk this evening. It's gonna come up Wednesday before the full board on a variance to deviate from the standard with respect to the, to the parking lot, and that's to allow venting of the methane in a natural fashion, and it'll involve some discussion of what the experts have had to say about it. The other time it's gonna come up is, I believe, when we go to engineering, when we design the buildings, and we'll have to show a mitigation plan for how we'll make sure that methane does not go into the buildings that are gonna be up at the front of the property. But two more times, and it will, it's gonna be coming before you, but not on a variance, more of just satisfying the planning.
Can I, can I add one thing, if you don't mind?
Why, absolutely, D3.
I know we've referenced our ordinance, but just for, you know, for the sake of, you know, why, the workshop we had before.
Yes, sir.
And our non-motorized complete street plan sidewalks in our master plan also reflects the same.
Yes.
So, you know, obviously, further discussion can take place after this meeting, but those are items that, you know, that's kind of our guide as to, as to why, you know, the reviews are, are the way they are with regards to the request and...
Okay. All right, Dean, very good.
Is that safe to say?
Yeah.
One thing I would add, Mike, I thank you for bringing up the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission approved this project, folks, and there were two things that we were looking for. Well, there were at least three things, but two of them, one was materials, of course, brick and stone for the buildings. Second was an eight-foot-wide sidewalk, and if not, get a variance. That's what we're working on tonight. And three, to deviate from parking standards for storage area and the proposed gravel. That is for the Board of Trustees to determine. So those are three things. The Planning Commission was very much in favor of this project in spite of the problems with methane gas, and that's why the Board of Trustees is gonna have to weigh in on what type of material you're gonna put for that RV parking, which is not gonna support solid. It's gonna have to be something like gravel or whatever that still allows something to come up out of the ground, sad to say, but the other thing, I think, brought us to the conclusion at the Planning Commission that we did is, if it's not gonna be a driving range, what else is that large piece of land going to do but stay empty? And Benny, our zoning board member to my right, on your left, if you're watching us on TV, can talk about that piece of land going years back when TRW, and this is why the issue is what it is with the methane gas. So I know there've been studies, and I don't know if they're still going on, Pete, but I thought the Planning Commission was pretty well satisfied that whatever the buildings near the front were gonna, I know you'd like to put buildings in all the way back. Of course you would. You didn't plan on RV, storage, and all the rest, but you're trying to make the best out of the lemons, you know, and trying to make lemonade. So the Planning Commission could appreciate that, and that's all I would add, but I just wanted the folks to know on the zoning board, that's what happened at the Planning Commission level, and this applicant has been before our staff at least a couple of times in pre-planning committee meetings. I think at least twice, Dean, it could have, it could be even more. They have tried and bent over backwards in purchasing property that no one anticipated would have the issue of the methane gas. And I think Benny has outlined what that has been historically.
Yeah, there was a lot of sludge back there at one time.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we'd like to thank you for those comments, and we take that to heart, because, yes, we had plans to build a lot more. There would be more buildings there, and this kind of threw the curveball, the methane and the other items that we're addressing, but we're hopeful that we're gonna get across the finish line, and you've all been very cooperative between the Planning Commission, ZBA, and the...
Hey, it's either that or that land's gonna stay empty, and I don't think it behooves this community or anyone for a large tract of land... And I don't think it behooves this community or anyone for a large tract of land, land that size, to just sit there as an eyesore. I mean, it looked nice as a golf driving range, but it'll look a whole lot nicer, there's some buildings, uh, on the Van Dyke, the required road, and, uh, you know, in behind, which you guys are going to probably build a berm and no one's going to see, the RVs and all the rest and storage. Hopefully it comes to that one day, but that's my opinion, and, you know, there's five of us here and we're going to be voting pretty soon on a motion. All right. Anybody here besides myself, uh, want to make a motion? Okay, looks like yours truly will do that. And, uh, I want to make a motion to approve, uh, the application for variance.
I'll support.
Okay, thank you though, Michelle. Um, that's for 61-400-VANDYKE, parcel number 2404224008 for variance from our Township Zoning Board. Article 5, Site Standards, Section 5.8, Pathways, Sidewalks, Walkways, applicability, Required Roads, Pathway or Sidewalk shall be constructed in the following instances. For all new construction of non-residential buildings which constitute principal use of the property and for any development in which a site plan must be submitted review by the Planning Commission, which it already has been, and not require the construction of an eight-foot wide concrete pathway across the frontage of the subject property, 61-400-VANDYKE. The decision is based on the criteria as outlined in the Washington Township Zoning Ordinance, Section 7.9, E. Zoning Board of Appeals, variance review. Starting with, uh, the first element that we look at that's required, um, in our review, thank you very much, Troy. The strict enforcement would cause a severe difficulty, practical difficulty or hardship for a number of reasons. Um, it's installing the sidewalk, uh, easily should be noted that directly across Van Dyke, they have a wonderful orchard trail for walking and biking, and thankfully it is screened off from Van Dyke, but that's all it's going to be there along Van Dyke on the west side of Van Dyke is that orchard trail. The strict adherence to the ordinance relative to sidewalk and pathway standards require the taking of additional land on the property outside of the right-of-way where the sidewalk is normally installed, and increased development costs. Installation of a sidewalk or pathway, pathway would complicate extension of intention, planned sanitary sewer and water main infrastructure onto and beyond the owner's property along the east side of Van Dyke, and would also need and require a permit from Eagle, the Michigan State Department overseeing wetlands. Plus we have our own county wetlands and wetlands ordinance within the township. B, conditions and circumstances are clearly unique to this subject property. It doesn't appear that any other properties are impacted by wetlands along Van Dyke. The applicant's property is impacted on north and south sides by wetlands. South property has 140 plus regula, uh, plus minus of regulated wetlands. The owner will need to build a boardwalk to avoid filling the wetlands. Either way, an Eagle permit will be required to build within the wetlands. No other property owner along Van Dyke in this area would be required to get an Eagle pro, approval to build a sidewalk. Wetland credits or mitigation may be required are an additional cost to the property owner. Other conditions specifically, again, the McComb Orchard Trail being a much better alternative, which the everyday citizen in Washington Township realizes exists and is using profusely since it was constructed after the railroad tracks that reached the Ford Motor Plant up there in Romeo building tractors many, many years that were distributed throughout our country and the world. And once those rails were pulled out, here comes the Orchard Trail. Other conditions specifically, the McComb Orchard Trail is a better alternative, we all agree with that, and we all stated to any north-south pathway along Van Dyke from 28 to 29 mile road, also known as the ITC Corridor. C, variance approval will not, I'm sorry, conditions and circumstances, three, were not created by the owner or self-created. Of course not. Neither the owner nor its predecessor in interest created the wetlands on the north and south property line on the east side of Van Dyke. These natural features create an additional burden on this property without question. It has been brought to light by our DPW Director, Rich Amorino, who's in charge of all of the infrastructure, uh, building within this, uh, township, and he clearly stated in his comments, no pathway now, which is quite convincing and persuasive, in my opinion. He is where the rubber meets the road in conditions like this, and sadly, our conditions of the sidewalk ordinance requirements, required road and shall be this or that, are not met by the facts of this scenario by any stretch of imagination, and that's why the Zoning Board of Appeals is here to make a decision. We fill in the cracks of equity where our ordinances completely miss them. Four, granting a variance will not converse, confer special privileges, not in any special way. That's for sure, and even Rich Amorino sees the wisdom of due process in any kind of administrative and deliberative process, when he says similarly, similarly situated people should be treated similarly. There have been two parcels on the Van Dyke Road, 28 to 29, in this ITC Corridor that have been granted, have been granted variance because of the sidewalk request. One, where one property owner had a tree and shrubbery and, and landscape torn out by the ITC people who maintain jurisdiction underneath wherever the wires are, and we still haven't received any kind of, uh, clear definition of what ITC jurisdiction is, and maybe we need to have that one day. But that is one of the reasons why, in addition to wiping out that business, DMBA, that we granted the variance on the sidewalk request. B, the Samaritan House, a, a nonprofit business with merely 60 feet of frontage, but it would have cost them $60,000-plus to install a sidewalk to and from nowhere for a business of, a nonprofit operation that provided food for many of the residents in this and surrounding communities, the people who needed it, and that's the spirit and intent of this ordinance. Our staff and the folks who put together our sidewalk ordinance a couple of years ago really had to struggle with some difficult stuff. It was no question, we had people who lived on dirt roads in a beauty, uh, nature beauty pathways on campground, half who wanted paved roads and the other half didn't. We had the same thing on Mount Vernon Road, half wanted the dirt paved, half didn't. So we had to come up with some kind of solution that would get us out of that situation. A lot of public hearings, a lot of comments. I can understand, and I'm not going to admonish anybody, uh, as a result of that sidewalk ordinance and the way it exists today, there are still blind spots in it. We did not take the time, and maybe we didn't have it, to look at all the potential scenarios of, of situations in the township, such as the ITC Corridor. There may be others, but you can't write a rule or a law, folks, that's going to cover every potential possibility. That's why there are Boards of Appeal, that's why we are here. So I would like to conclude, in addition to what Michelle had stated earlier about easement being created along this east side of Van Dyke, along the ITC Corridor, easement created to alleviate this issue of sidewalks where really they're going to be useless. The terrain doesn't accommodate it. The need for the businesses that are there aren't going to benefit from it, and we have the Orchard Trail, which is a regional pathway located on the west side of Van Dyke, which all the population in our township recognizes is there. And I don't care what we word in our situations, in our ordinances, and what people want to demand, and it's irrelevant, as I've heard before on this board, irrelevant, no, it doesn't matter. Oh, it does matter, because that's what the everyday person knows. They know about the Orchard Trail, that's what they're going to use. They're not going to worry about the east side of Van Dyke where there's going to be a sidewalk here or there, and a bridge or a sidewalk to and from nowhere. So let's consider that we are not flying in the spirit of the ordinance to provide walkable community and increase public safety, because the Orchard Trail is there and it exists, and the world knows it, and we're not going to try to pretend that it doesn't exist and it's irrelevant because somebody thinks it doesn't fit in the ordinance. Well, guess why we're here? We're here because of the ordinance, not in spite of it, and we're not going to let the ordinance get in the way of what's best for this township. The, the request, any proposed design doesn't increase any burden on neighboring properties, and with this motion, long as it may be, I hope it sets a standard for our legislators on the board to review or reconvene or redesign our sidewalk ordinance, or maybe amend it for conditions such as we have had here, and possibly wording it with the easement contingency that certainly should go along with this, and hopefully at the Planning Commission level, we can make a decision while throwing it to the Zoning Board of Appeals to make a decision when it's obviously not going to be something that we need on the east side of Van Dyke. Maybe one day we will, but for now, like Rich Amorino said, our DPW Director, no pathway now.
And then also with the dedication of an easement for public utilities and for future sidewalk installation, was that part of that?
It was, Dana, thank you. Thank you, I, I, I kind of stumbled over that, but, uh, that's why you're here.
Do you want me to repeat that motion?
Yeah.
I, I will stand.
Uh, Michelle had already seconded it.
Yes.
So we can take a roll call.
Did you know it was that long when you seconded it?
Why do you think I didn't want to read it?
Okay.
If you have that in writing, that would be fantastic.
Well, thank God, hopefully we got it recorded somewhere, roll call it.
Okay, so may I have a roll call, Chairman?
Please.
Okay, Mr. Sacco.
Yes.
Shocking. Mr. Pollak.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Colso.
Yes.
Okay, Mylum Yas, Mr. Pollitt.
Yes.
Okay, fellas.
Thank you.
Congratulations and do a good job. Hopefully you get to that, that, that end zone.
The lights, you see the light.
Okay, well.
Where the sidewalk ends.
The light isn't to or from nowhere, right?
All the jokes.
Okay.
All of us.
Thanks. Okay, and our.
It's generally freezing in here, or normally so warm in here. Not today it's freezing.
Some, sometimes, it's either way, Michelle, and it's extreme.
Yeah.
Okay, new business, anything new? None. Okay, public comments. Hey, public, we got anything out there? Nico, you want to add anything? All right, nothing from the public. Nico has got nothing for us. By the way, Nico's our WBRW person in charge, so those of you who don't see him, I want to point that out. I also want to point out Dana Birchbeck is our community zoning planner. I usually do that at the front end, but, you know, we had a busy night tonight. And next to Dana is our community planner, um, Kayla Sp, uh, Kayla Malden, Kayla Malden, Cassie, uh, uh, Cassie's last name?
Midal.
Cassie Midal is not here this evening, but she's here in spirit, is our other community planner. And once in a while, Michael Kozak, our civil engineer, shows up, and, uh, but he's not here this evening, so that's okay, we did fine.
Can I just say, um, so I was, I was, I was really looking at no on that, and the reason is because of how the ordinance is written, and it's not that you're long or you're well-worded, uh.
On the record motion?
On the record motion, um, changed my mind. What did change my mind was the easement that was granted to the township. So granting the easement to the township, should that ever go through, and I think we need to ask the board, and we do have trustee Mylum here.
Yeah.
It's great to have you here because then you can take stuff back to the board. Is, is that part of the agreement? Because before we, we granted a, we, we denied for someone on 31 mile road. Now they didn't have the McComb Orchard Trail, that was a, uh, availability, um, but I think we need to look at that ITC corridor, that portion needs to be fixed, because we're going to keep having this. And then can we count the McComb Orchard Trail as part of it? Can we say that is, and that's why it doesn't?
Well, you can change the road requirement for the sidewalk if that's the intent of.
Along the, along the trail if we're going to count that with access.
Between 20, 29, but that's up to the board's direction and the PC.
D3, that's why D3 is here.
I do think it has to be still case by case, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Because of the fact that when you do get that residential subdivision somehow plugged in one of those spots, it may change.
Right.
But this was a no-brainer.
Michelle, it would be, uh, on a case-by-case basis per the Planning Commission's review.
Correct.
And so.
So you're saying just stick it there, keep it there.
Yes, yes.
Handle your business.
But that would, yes, thank you.
Well, and they can, and anyone can always appeal whatever ordinance requirement, um, but if you're looking at just changing the road designation based on that being industrial.
And maybe not even practical, that, that we can put roads in there. There's some of those, when you look at, when you take it all the way up to 29, you cannot put a, a sidewalk in it, but it's still labeled as a required road.
Yeah.
So if anybody comes through and wants to change something, add on.
It's, it's very limited, um, the space there, but as a requirement of the ordinance and as a part of our master plan, you know, that's, that was the intent, and that's how things are reviewed when they come in.
We can amend that, right?
But that's, and that, absolutely, absolutely.
And we talk about the type of property it is. It's not a very desirable people piece.
No.
We, we cannot risk losing this great tax-paying base.
That's right.
That's a huge issue too. I mean, the residents want not a lot of growth, there has to be some growth to sustain us, and when we, this is good growth. This isn't bringing extra people that are going to camp out, this is, this is good growth. It's taking care of a piece of land that wasn't treated properly back in the day, and it's going to get a knock, a new life.
That's right.
So I, I think it's a win for the township.
No, that's why the motion is as long as it was. I'm sorry, folks, but there, there is a lot that goes into amending, revising, justifying the things that we do here, and we have to stand on all fours and be able to look anybody square in the eye and say, we did the right thing because of these reasons. And, you know, we have these five elements for the Zoning Board of Appeals decisions, and they are, have been time-tested and proven through many communities through the years. We just have to fill in the blanks, especially when we have, and I'm not, uh, you know, admonishing the folks who put together the sidewalk ordinance, uh, a couple of years ago. That was a hell of a project, but you can't see everything, even all the people and the public that was involved, we just can't see everything that's going to cover anything possible in the future. The ITC Corridor was a blind spot, we missed it, and we can amend it, we can make it right. And to me, that's an area in our township, from 28 to 29, that cries out every day, leave me alone. You know, I just look at it that way, and like Michelle says, what the heck else is going to go on with that large tract of land?
Yeah, there's also limited space on, on the opposite side, because you have DWSD or whatever they're, whatever they are now, but that, that's their main line that runs parallel to the McComb Orchard Trail.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's, you know, obviously nothing can be constructed within that easement area, and it limits the shoulder, and, I mean, there's a lot of factors, I think it's definitely worth exploring, and there might be other areas in the township that you might feel.
Now you're on to something, D, there may be other areas.
Yeah. Because you don't want to just look at one, we've had other, you know, situations that came up, so maybe it's the time to just.
Yeah.
Re-review it and, and see, you know, if, if there's things that aren't just, you know, black and white.
That's right, and what I, what I always fear with law and rules in ordinance, people think it's, it's something that you could pull off the shelf and read it and that's it, that's the Ten, a Ten Commandment. No, it's, it's not the case. This is a difficult process, and, and doing the sidewalks in our township in many growing pain places where only, not even 30,000 people, how many people you think are going to walk from 28 to 29 mile road on the east side of Van Dyke? They got the Orchard Trail.
Well, it, it does. Well, it does seem like common sense.
Yes.
However, until you pointed it out, I really wasn't thinking commonsense-wise with the other side of the street, and, you know, Sam has done a very good job of talking to the board about spending some money on signage and being a part of the Orchard Trail Committee now. I really, we do have money in the kitty. Maybe we do need to spend a little money on signage.
Signage, yes.
At the Orchard Trail side, because right there, it is very dense, and maybe people don't realize if you're not a walker that there's ability to access the trail. So, maybe we go to Mrs. Grouse and say to her, "Hey, we could use some of your orchard funds," because they're there, to say, "Hey, we'd like some form of signage, trail on other side of railway, right-of-way, something that promotes the visual and lets people know we're a very walkable community, just not in the middle of the highway."
Yeah, and we're still achieving the goals of the master plan by creating that, and we also have a sidewalk master plan, you know, the gap program to try to fill in all the gaps, too. I think it would be beneficial to even see where, what year and what phase, and kind of maybe encourage that, the Planning Commission with that, too, at some point.
You know, if some crazy thing were to happen, and we did say, "All right, let's make everybody put their sidewalk in from 28 to 29 Mile on the east side of the road." We made them do it. If you had a choice, where do you want to walk safely on Orchard Trail from 28 to 29? We walk on Van Dyke with your head on a swivel, waiting for someone to pull in, take you out.
And that's what did it for me, when you said, "I don't think anybody..." Well, we're talking about the same issues. I think we all agree. We did a great job tonight because we listened to how we would want to live our life at the end of the day, and it wasn't walking down that area, especially if you have people turning into those businesses. It's...
They're coming right off Van Dyke. You think they're going to pull off 45, 50 miles an hour and say, "Oh, is that a person? Oh, that is a..."
It's a brainy type of...
That was a stroller.
The first person that gets hit, who they're coming after.
Yeah, I think you're better off just staying on Orchard Trail where it's safer and stay off of Van Dyke walking.
I would like to make one more comment, if anybody's still watching at home, but the township did a workshop tonight, and it was pretty good. It was a Michigan Association of Planning, and I love everything to do with the planning, and they did one tonight on a very brief overview. Because the township purchased it, it's not, you have to be here in person, is my understanding, to be a part of it, but they're planning a few more, so there's a big one coming up on planned unit development, and for those of you that are interested in some of these PUDs that are going in, why they're going in, why the township's doing it, that would be a great time to come in, ask some questions. That way, when they come before the Planning Commission, you have a good idea, a better education as to why they're going in.
Excellent, Troy, thank you.
So, that'll be on the township website.
Excellent.
Correct, yes.
I have one last comment, too.
All right.
If this ordinance is changed, a lot of times taxpayers come in here, and they have to pay all these fees to come to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that does not sit well with some of them, too, and the fees have an increase, too, which is a good thing, I guess.
Yeah, it's got to cover the cost of everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, that's something that could be changed, like taxpayers, especially a homeowner, you know, when they're building a house or something, if they have to come in for like a zoning change, I mean, that's another added, you know, fee onto their house.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. Kayla, any last comments before we get a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay. I hope we gave you something to think about. Add to our, add to our ability here to act as a zoning board? Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourn.